Good morning, County Council. I would now like to call to order this County Council meeting of September 11th, 2025. And at this point in time, as we are able, please join us in the singing and the standing for O Canada.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts, we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please conduct our roll call?
Counselor Mackey.
Present.
Counselor McKay sends his regrets today. Counselor Carlton. Counselor Pringle. Counselor McQueen, I believe, is joining us momentarily. Counselor Nielsen.
Present.
Counselor Patterson. Counselor Dickert. Counselor Kentner. Counselor Kivony. Counselor Body. Counselor Greg. Counselor Milm. Counselor Dobrine. Warden Matrasovs.
Present.
Counselor Boarding Yaw says his regrets today. Counselor Echols. Counselor Hutchinson.
Present.
We have all members in attendance today with the exception of Counselors McKay, Boarding Yaw, and McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let us begin by acknowledging with respect that we are gathered on the traditional territory of the Inishnaq Nation. The people of known of the three fires known as the Ojibwe, Odawa, and Potawatomi nations. We give thanks to the Chipwazasogin and the Chipwaz of Nauwah, collectively known as the Sogin-Ojibwe Nation. The traditional keepers of these lands and waters since time immemorial. In our south lies the traditional territories of the Six Nations of the Grand River and the Hone de Shone. We are dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture. And committed to moving forward in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and friendship with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people. At this point in time, I would like to put out a call if there are any declarations of interest. Seeing none, we'll move on to the adoption of the minutes. It's recommended that these minutes of County Council meeting and the committee, the whole meeting dated August 14th, 2025, and the resolutions contained therein be adopted as presented. May I ask for a mover? Moved by Counselor Kivony, seconded by Counselor Echols. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that motion is carried. Next, item 6B. It's recommended that the closed session committee of the whole meeting minutes dated August 14th, 2025 be adopted as provided. May I ask for a mover? Moved by Counselor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Mackey. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. We do not have any closed, uh, closed meeting matters on this council agenda, and that allows us to go to our reports. And, uh, we have, it's recommended that the Board of Health minutes dated June 27th, 2025 be received for information. May I ask for a mover? Uh, moved by Counselor Dickert, seconder, seconded by Counselor Dobrine. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. All right, that allows us to move on to number nine, which is the bylaws. It's recommended that bylaw 524825 being, be introduced. Oh, sorry? We just did that. Yes, I, yes, we had it moved by Counselor Dickert, I believe, and seconded by Counselor Dobrine. So that, I. No apologies necessary. Yes, it's always good to make sure that we're covering everything. Thank you very much. So with that, uh, yes, so we are going to recommend that bylaw 524825 be introduced and taken as read a first, second, and third time, finally passed, signed by the warden and the clerk, sealed with the seal of the corporation and engrossed in the bylaw book. This is 524825, a bylaw to confirm all the actions and proceedings of council. Deputy Warden, would you like to move that? Moved by Deputy Warden, may I ask for a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Echols. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Excellent. So we now move on to news and celebrations, and, um, I think, uh, perhaps CAO do. I think I'm going to call up on Director Myers first for some exciting news about our Gray County Gallery launch event. If you want to come forward, Director Myers to the lectern, and, uh, and then we'll follow up with some updates from AMO. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Warden. Good morning, County Council. You have an invitation on all of your desks there, uh, for the official grand opening of our Gray Gallery. This has been an eight-year project, uh, that has been ongoing. A lot of time and effort has gone into, uh, making sure that we've got something for our next 20 years or more. Our very final exhibit, uh, that is put together in this piece of the gallery is called Hope. So what a way to end. Uh, so we would like to invite all of you out, uh, next Friday night from six to eight. There's an RSVP on that invitation if you're available to come and see the gallery. Um, we've got staff to be able to take you through a tour of it. Uh, and if you're not available that night, please do join us at any time to come and see it because it really is impressive, and I think that we've got longevity out of this and a great story to tell about Gray County. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Myers. And with that, I'd like to look to the CAO to provide us with a, a summary, to share a summary of the AMO conference and the delegation update, and then we'll open it to County Council members who were in attendance that wish to add any extra highlights. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Warden Matrasovs, and good morning, Council. So this is our first council meeting, uh, since the AMO conference that was held last month, so we thought it'd be good to do a bit of a recap of the conference. Uh, the warden and several Gray County councillors and senior staff attended the, the multi-day event. Included various educational programming and opportunities to meet with, uh, various government representatives. The, the county put forward four delegation requests to various ministries, and we were granted all four delegations. The first delegation was with Deputy Premier and Minister of Health Sylvia Jones. Delegates discussed community paramedicine funding and, and reporting, and thanked the minister for the recent increases in permanent funding support and the significant stability that this helps to bring, uh, to the community paramedicine program. We asked that the minister consider ensuring that these fund, funding programs see inflationary support over successive years. Funding for the community paramedicine program comes from two ministries, being Long Term Care, as well as the Ministry of Health. And each stream comes with distinct reporting requirements and processes. Uh, the delegation raised concerns about the duplication of reporting requirements to both Ministry of Health and the Ministry of Long Term Care. Overall, the, the meeting with Minister Jones was, was productive, and the minister really seemed to focus on the, the duplicate reporting issue. So county staff will be following up with ministry staff to see if this is something that we can work with the ministries to streamline those reporting requirements. The second delegation was with Minister Kuzendova-Bashta, Minister of Long Term Care. Discussions included the, the long wait times for vulnerable sector screenings, the continuation of resident support personnel alongside PSWs, as well as an update on the Rockwood Terrace redevelopment project. Delegates also requested clarity on whether projects are already underway, would be eligible for the new funding model announced, uh, in the 2025 provincial budget. Uh, further clarity was provided by the minister and her support staff, and county staff will be following up with respect to this. Uh, staff are also in the process of obtaining more information about the new long-term care redevelopment funding model announced by the province, and we'll be bringing back further information to council regarding this. The third delegation was with Minister Quinn, Minister of Colleges, Universities, Research, Excellence, and Security. Uh, the discussion focused on the financial pressures facing small rural college campuses. Uh, delegates advocated for sustainable funding and investments in colleges as they, they are essential rural infrastructure for, for our region. Ontario colleges are facing a financial crisis. Without stabilization funding and structural reform, campuses are at risk. Uh, there's fewer local training opportunities would mean that fewer skilled workers, which would directly impact our businesses and economy. The minister was receptive to our delegation and understood the importance of rural college campuses for workforce development. Uh, so we'll be continued to work with Georgian College and the province to continue to underline the importance of the Georgian College Own Sound Campus as a key workforce development hub in our region. In our last delegation, Gray County advocated for a return to long-term funding for small business enterprise centers with the Associate Minister Nina Tangri, uh, of the Ministry of Economic Development, Job Creation, and Trade. Gray County is home to more than 13,000 businesses and 92, 99% of which are small businesses. And the Gray County Business Enterprise Center supports hundreds of entrepreneurs each and every year. Long-term funding for our Business Enterprise Center ensures we can continue providing the tools and services that help local businesses start, grow, and succeed. Uh, Associate Minister Tangri acknowledged the importance of the small business enterprise centers and seemed interested in touring the Sidneyham campus, which is where the Business Enterprise Center is located. So we'll again be following up with, uh, her staff and, and try to arrange a tour at some point in the near future. In addition to Gray County delegations, uh, I know Warden Matrasov also participated in meetings with local municipalities, the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative, just to name a few. All Gray County delegations were supported by, uh, Bruce Gray Own Sound MPP Paul Vickers, and we thanked MPP Vickers for attending and supporting all the delegation meetings. Uh, members of the Gray County team participate in a number of other local delegations in areas such as local access to primary care physicians and family practitioners to seeking to reduce red tape, and with the Ministry of Transportation with respect to public transit and the Own Sound Harbor. And I want to thank Nile, Jen Cornell, and Savannah Myers for their assistance, uh, with the county delegations, as well as Rob Hatton and Kayla Ryer for helping with finalizing all, all the delegation briefs. So that's a summary of the email.
Excellent. Thank you. And I'm glad that you concluded with the participation of our, of our senior staff in the way that they're, uh, helpful both behind the scenes in preparing the applications and the materials, and then that those that were able to come. I certainly think it does, it does resonate and makes a difference on the other side of the table when there are staff members that are key, key professionals and experts in the particular field that we're talking about because, um, you, Director Myers, Director Cornell, and, and the others, they are the, you're the ones that they'll want to talk to when they want to delve further into those topics. So it was excellent, and it was also wonderful to be able to have both our CAO and our deputy CAO and to be able to divide and conquer when necessary, and my appreciation to the deputy warden who was able to help with that when there were some conflicting, uh, presentations to make. And certainly the highlight that I would like to share is, is the, uh, the demonstration, which was duly noted by the ministries of the collaborative partnership that we have with Georgian College, with Advantage Ontario by sharing and presenting the, the luncheon and also talking about, uh, the issues for long-term care at our delegation and to the counties, and that included, uh, sitting in together with the delegation with Bruce County, uh, who continues to be our, our most sister county, and it was very much appreciated, uh, again, by the ministry that we could come together and talk about issues together. And certainly that was one of the effectiveness of the, uh, the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus as well, to be able to speak saying what's, what's happening here in Gray County is also happening in 15 counties, so it's worth paying attention to and problem solving together. So with that, can I just open it up for any highlights that any other members who are attending? So many of you were so busy lined up in the hallways waiting to give your own municipality, uh, presentations. A number of you, the, the chairs of our committees also came along to the Gray County, uh, delegations. Just is there anything else that you'd like to share about AMO before I open up news and celebrations to all the other wonderful things that happen in our municipalities? Counselor McQueen.
Well, thank you, Madam Clerk, and good morning, County Council. Um, just in a sense, thank you very much for the update on those delegations. I think it's very important that we all hear the highlights of, of those delegations. I guess a question I'm going to raise, and I did raise it, uh, the, for the Friday before the conference, was the ability for county councils to attend those delegations. In the past, I think there was normally an email or something went out if you wished to attend certain delegations that, because I understand they like to register those, uh, county councils that would like to attend, and I don't know if we need a policy on that process. I know that in the past, uh, I think all county councillors were invited to attend if they wish. And so I don't know if there's any comments to that, but I know from, uh, numbers, I, when I was warden, I'd be 2020, I know the county, the Wardens Caucus was made up of many people that filled the room, so I don't know if there's a number, but I, I do realize that there may be one to know beforehand, but I, you know, and, and furthermore, I know there was a lot of communication that came out with regards to those attended. Some might ask, well, why are, are the county councillors there if they're at the AMO conference? I just think there's a, there's a, I think just think there's a process that we need to follow through here in the sense of policy, and I think, I know there's a couple I might have liked to attend, which I wasn't invited, and I look in past emails from past years, and we were invited. So anyway, just saying, moving forward, maybe we can, because there's both AMO and Roma itself. I know we're busy with our own municipalities, and sometimes we have joint delegations as well. But, uh, I think in the past, we've had an opportunity of those kind of councils attending to be present during those delegations as well.
Uh, thank you. And certainly I have noted over the years, um, that I have been attending delegations, both in the previous term and this term, that there has been a change from the ministry. They are very specific now about who is entering the room, and, and we're less agile, we're less able to have people come and then people change. Um, it seems to be more of a procedure when there has to be a substitution. So, um, and I appreciate that they want to know, that they want to have that heads up. So that's certainly something that, that we, we have noticed a difference in. Uh, and, and we have been over the, I'll look to the CAO for how long we've been doing the practice of making sure that the committee chairs are involved for that specific topic, and, uh, and perhaps, uh, some feedback on when the transition may have been and, and what we can do moving forward in terms of policy.
For sure. Thank you. Thank you for your, uh, comments, uh, Counselor McQueen, and, and for the comments, uh, Warden Matrasovs. Um, I'm of course happy to take any further direction from council in terms of how to approach this. As the warden indicated, uh, what we've seen is a bit of a shift, uh, in terms of ministers asking, well, when we're submitting our delegation, uh, request even, uh, listing who's going to be in attendance for that, uh, for those sessions. And, and so it's difficult to obviously indicate, uh, uh, you know, all, all the, the council members that potentially could be attending, uh, those sessions ahead of, ahead of time. Um, but we're happy to explore what other options to be able to make sure that we have proper representation, uh, around that, uh, around those delegations in order to be able to, uh, provide the information that the, the ministers are looking for, as well as the, uh, what we're hoping to try to portray to the various ministries. So with that, it's, yeah, again, I'm open to any direction. Um, I was, based on the delegation request and the names that were put forward, I usually should put the, the, or we've been doing the, the warden, the past, the deputy warden, in case there's conflicts, which there usually always is some conflict. So again, a bit of a divide and conquer approach. Um, we also tried to include any, uh, if there's chairs of certain committees where it's associated with a particular topic, uh, as well as if there's a specific matter that's associated with, uh, a particular municipality. Uh, so for example, Georgian College being in Own Sound, uh, uh, we had an Own Sound rep as well, uh, attend for, for that. Um, so that's, that's how we've been approaching this in terms of, again, we have to put these in so far advanced in terms of delegation requests, and who's going to be attending those. Uh, that's how we approached it, uh, this year, and tried to stick to a similar process in the previous years. Um, but again, happy to take any further direction from council in terms of how you'd like to approach this. I think the best practice is to try to make sure that the representatives that are appearing for the delegation, just because when you get to a delegation, going through the various introductions, it takes a bit of time. The key is to make sure that we're getting the message across to the ministry staff and to the minister, uh, or the Associate Minister in terms of what our requests are. So just, just putting that into context in terms of, you know, who should be in attendance for those, those sessions. I think absolutely it should be at least the warden and/or deputy warden, uh, and, and/or some chair representatives would be staff's recommendation, but also happy to take any direction further in terms of who else should be in attendance in future Roma, AMO delegations in the, in the future.
Okay, thank you. So we'll take that into consideration. So I'd like to open the floor then for any further highlights on AMO before we go into other news and celebrations. Counselor Body.
Thank you. Uh, we had six delegations, one of them being jointly with, uh, Hanover on Policing. And, uh, maybe it's, I'm, I'm going to back up. I want to thank, uh, everybody that, that attended with us. So we certainly had representation from the county and from municipalities, neighboring municipalities and different, uh, different leadership because we wanted to show that we're, uh, all in there. You're absolutely right. That was noticed. When you go in with, um, mayor's, deputy mayor's, and representatives from different municipalities all saying this is an issue. I found this year that the response was different from the ministers, and everyone that we attended was, uh, making notes, asking questions, uh, wanting to follow up, wanting to come to visit. And I found that a little bit different. Uh, and I was talking to somebody who works in the Ontario government saying, is there a directive from the premier's office? And the answer was absolutely not. But they found too that there's more of us coming in from the municipalities with ideas that we were sharing, not necessarily asks and demands. And, uh, that was certainly how we framed everything that we went with this year and felt that we got a positive, uh, response on, uh, a lot of things. Of course, proof will be in the pudding in the outcome in the, uh, in the coming months of whether we move the, uh, move the line and, uh, anyway, but I found it a really good conference. I do note that on the sessions, which I didn't get to many with the six delegations, uh, there was one session in four days on homelessness. There were four sessions that I counted that, uh, had the word housing in it, but most of them were just talking about not necessarily affordable housing, but just housing in general and trying to get more housing built. I found that interesting with, uh, what we hear on the ground is municipal, uh, representatives in our own communities on those topics. It seems to be a bigger topic perhaps here than it was at AMO, which is fascinating. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And other AMO highlights? Okay, well, I think the CEO provided us with an excellent review, and certainly they, there were more delegations than ever. We were hearing 800 different presentations and delegations were made because it was not just to the ministers, but also to ministry staff as well, or the parliamentary assistant. Uh, so we did, uh, we, at one point in time, we actually presented to our MPP Vickers and his role in agriculture. So it was very good to see. Um, I, I did attend a total of 16 delegations, and, uh, thank very much the municipalities that invited me to attend so that we could understand the, the, uh, the connections and the way that we could support the lower tier in, in what the asks were, uh, and, uh, and also had to turn down a number because of the conflicts. So it, it was very good to see. Didn't see much of the program, but that's okay, because as I explained to people who are looking from the outside in, this is a key aspect of, of both AMO and Roma. This is not just an aside. This isn't, uh, this isn't a, a, a distraction from the main event. This is actually part of the main event to be able to have that face-to-face time and use exquisitely the 10 minutes that you have and allow enough time for the minister to ask questions back to be able to, uh, to, you know, uh, make it, make it the one that they put the dog ear on the top of and say, we've got to follow up on this one. So, uh, certainly the time is of the advantage in each and every one of those, but very crucial 10 minutes that you have in front of the ministry at that point in time. Okay, so let's open it up to other news and celebrations then from the municipalities. This certainly has been a wonderful fall fair season thus far, and there are more to come, but, uh, so news and celebrations, things that are coming up that you'd like to share. We'll go to Counselor Carlton.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs, and good morning, County Council. This is not something that's coming up. It's something that happened this past Tuesday evening and at Gray Roots, where Georgian Bluffs held our connect and collaborate for residents to come in, ask questions. So with the new waste management system coming in, there were a lot of questions about that, questions about roads, about planning. The Own Sound Library joined us, and we're quite pleased with the response that they got from people. So as a facility to use, I'm really glad that Gray Roots is within Georgian Bluffs because it's a perfect spot for us. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll go to Counselor Kivony.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs, and good morning, County Council and everyone. Um, I just wanted to share that, uh, our annual scarecrow invasion is in full swing in Meaford. Hundreds of scarecrows handmade by volunteers are adorning our lampposts and decorating businesses in our municipal facilities. So it's always fun to come out and see, uh, what the theme is this year, which is actually just scarecrows. So there's a, a real variety of characters around Meaford. The Family Festival and Parade is October the 3rd this year, so, uh, they're a huge attraction. Come on out and see. There's an apple pie tasting con- test and lots of activities for kids. And also, as if that's not enough, we've got a myth happening, our Meaford International Film Festival, another annual event. And this is taking place from the 18th to the 21st of September with six films, three dinners, and three parties. Uh, this year's dinners are provided by Franny's Mercato, Lovebird, and the Dam Pub. And this is a fundraiser by our Meaford Culture Foundation, and those proceeds all go back in to support capital and programming at, um, Meaford Hall. So, uh, check out the brochure. I've got one with me if anybody wants to take a peek at what's happening, and hopefully we'll see some of you at Meaford Hall. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And, uh, next we'll go to Counselor Body.
Thank you. This weekend is, we host in the area, Canada's biggest premier motoring festival with the Concorde du Elegance. Uh, I think it's the 10th year. It's a pretty special event. Friday, they'll be touring some of the, uh, some of the cars over to Wharton and no doubt down, uh, Gray County Road One with those great hills and views. Wonder if they'll be going up. Some of them don't have the best brakes. Anyway, that's beside the point. Saturday, we've got Cars and Copies starting on Main Street in, uh, Own Sound, which is classic cars in the area. Some of the cars from the, uh, Concorde come to, uh, come to it, running a little bit later, but during the day, same day, in front of the Legion is the Concorde lemons. That is so much fun. That's where you get really creative stuff, rusty stuff, anything that, if you think about it as being the anti-car show, this is, uh, this is it. People put a lot of creativity into, uh, into their vehicles, and they're painted differently, and, uh, sometimes, uh, looked like a Gulf Green, um, really, really neat, fun stuff, and everyone has fun, and the winners win cans of Spam and different things. So it's, it's just so much fun. At the Roxy are two seminars that, uh, are pretty neat, and you get a lot of really neat history. This year, I don't have the name, uh, but it is the son of the person that brought Ferrari racing to North America, and he's going to tell the, uh, the family stories and everything that goes with that. Joel Villanueva's wife, Jacques Villanueva's mother is one of the speakers, which is, uh, really cool. Um, I can't remember what the other seminar is, but look it up. If you're into cars, uh, these two seminars will be pretty amazing. And then of course, the big show is Sunday out at Cobble Beach, um, in, in Georgian Bluffs outside the city of Own Sound still. Geez, I didn't get, I didn't get a reaction to that. If, if you, if you haven't been to the Concorde Elegance, you have to go. All the proceeds are going to, uh, Sunnybrook Hospital and the Breakshores, uh, Health Systems. Sunnybrook, of course, is doing the little tie-in, uh, uh, using the isotopes coming out of Bruce Power and, uh, doing research and doing treatment with them. Um, so it's nice to have that connection between here, Sunnybrook, and, uh, and, uh, our, our own hospital, uh, here that has, um, cancer treatment. These are the most special cars in the world. A couple of years ago, I joked with one, joke, no. Couple of years ago, stupidly, I said to one of the owners about the, uh, the chrome on his car, and he lost it on me. It was silver from such and such a mine in Sweden because chrome wasn't invented until 1934, and this is 1918. He had the entire history of the car. It'd only been owned by three different people. It had ostrich skin seats. It, uh, won the first concours. Like, these are really, really amazing pieces of art, and, uh, even if you're not into them, historic cars, um, Bill Gates', uh, Porsche is going to be there. He brought it over from Europe, but couldn't get approved to be on the streets for 10 or 12 years, ridiculous amount of time. So some pretty special cars are going to be there. So I encourage everyone to, uh, come up to, uh, North Gray and, uh, and enjoy the two days of the, uh, motoring festival. Thanks.
Thank you. And are there any other news and celebrations? Looking around the room, we'll go over to Counselor Dobrine, and then we'll go to- Looking around the room, we'll go over to councillor Dobrine and then we'll go to councillor Eccles after that.
Thank you and good morning, Warden, County Council and guests. I did want to give a shout out to the Dundalk Fall Fair that held its one hundred and sixty-eighth uh, annual fall fair on, uh, this past weekend. But due to Mother Nature not cooperating, the first ever drone light display had to be postponed. And I wanted to extend an invitation to all to attend that drone light display show in Feversham at the Feversham Fall Fair this Friday evening. It, uh, admission is free and it is being brought to the Feversham Fall Fair at the Osprey Community Centre, um, compliments of the Dundalk Agricultural Society. So big shout out to all of the volunteers that participated over this past weekend and we look forward to the light show that will grace the, uh, the Fall Fair in Feversham.
Thank you. And we'll go to councillor Eccles.
Uh, thank you, Madam Morton. And speaking of fall fairs, the Newstead Fall Fair is on, uh, September twentieth to twenty-first, getting near the end of the fall fair season. Uh, we save the best till last, uh, for certain and, uh, would like to say that, uh, there was a function held in Newstead at the brewery, um, a week ago last Friday. Um, they had a, uh, a lot of crafters, uh, Friday Night Lights is what they called it. And it caused, uh, a major traffic jam in Newstead as there was over, uh, two thousand attendees. And parking was certainly at a premium, but, uh, the function, and if you get a chance, they are putting on a, on a, another program there, uh, for Oktoberfest. Uh, I believe it's the first weekend of, uh, October that, uh, they're going to host that and, uh, the reclamation of the brewery and the continuation of it. I noticed that, uh, the Deputy Mayor of Hanover was able to, uh, find his way down. Um, I won't comment on how he got home, but obviously he was very well because he's here again today. So, uh, a fabulous show and, uh, congratulations to the owners of the brewery for promoting Gray County tremendously.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go down the room and look on the screen. Okay, great. That concludes our news and celebrations. And so with that, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn. May I ask for a mover? Moved by councillor Patterson, seconded out by councillor Nielsen online. Any discussion? All those in favor? And we are so adjourned. We will take a moment to switch over the technology and begin our agenda with the committee, the whole. Thank you.